Oh, okay. Sorry. Do you want me to start from the beginning?
Sure.
Okay, item number one is the 360th update with Heidi Doyle and Abby Fisk. Item number two is the Community Preservation Act, Language for November Ballot Question, Jeremy Marsette and Jackie Morris. Item number three is the Discussion and Consideration of Intermunicipal Agreement with the Town of Holliston for the Sustainability Coordinator, and Jeremy Marsette is here for that. The Sherburne Community Center HBAC System Replacement, Jeremy Marsette and Douglas Burbush. Consideration of Appointments, Public Safety Committee, Dan Wolf, return to expire June 15, 2027, and he is a new appointment. Open Space Committee, Marion Nutriff, return to expire June 15, 2027. Marion would be going from an associate to a full voting member. And Kevin Stephenson, for a term to expire June 15, 2027, and he is a new appointment. Item number six is the Consent Agenda. Seven is Select Board Reports. And eight is the Town Administrator Reports for the Washington Maple Street Intersection, Staffing Updates, the RFQ for Designer Services for the Sherburne History Center, and Town Hall Campus PFAS.
Excellent. I think I should turn, Steven, you're really the vice chair, so you should really be taking over, not me. My apologies.
That's okay. I think you just kind of went back to your old habits.
Yeah.
Speed if I may. It might take a little while for Eric to get to rejoin us. He's lost his internet, so it might take a little bit for him to come back.
Yeah, I texted him. He didn't answer.
I assume we should just push on, though. I don't think there's anything that crucially requires his input. All right, so we'll start with the first one, the 350th Update, Heidi Doyle and Abby Fisk.
I think it's only me on tonight.
I think I only see you.
Yes.
Well, wait, we need to approve the agenda, I think, don't we?
Oh, sorry, my bad. This is what happens when we're handing off. All right. I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, vote. Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
And I'm I as well. All right. Now we can move on to the first item, Heidi Doyle with the 350th Update.
Thank you. And I believe Jeremy, since I'm over 50 and technology-challenged, I think Jeremy will be able to share the PowerPoint. Thank you very much, Jeremy. So the 350, we're on Instagram, Facebook, and the website is shown in the links there, and the newsletter was just sent out this last weekend. I hope all of you got a chance to see it, but it is also available online. So we'll go to the next slide.
Oh, no. I think Jeremy's frozen now. Uh-oh.
No, he's got, he's got.
There he's back, all right.
So we wanted to thank our supporters, and hopefully you can see our list is growing of who has donated so far, and we just recently got a $15,000 grant from the Sherburne Fund, so which really is a huge support. And we, as of yesterday, we also got another grant from Unibank for $2,500. That's not on this list yet. So next slide. So we wanted to thank a few people here because there's been a lot of behind-the-scenes folks were helping out. The 350th Parade is coming up, and we would like the Select Board, hopefully, to all participate, maybe in a car or walking or some form, and we'll be in touch with you guys as it gets close to the date. I won't list all the people here, but I think everyone can see, and the reports are online. Next slide, thank you. So here's a little bit of our budget, where we are. So as of August, we've raised $62,000, and the difference on that, you can see in the little box, the Sherburne Fund, we've had state grants, we've about 20, Middlesex Savings gave us $10,000. We've had town funding of $10,000 from free cash. We've had other donations from various banks and groups. And so the total has been 62 that we've received in. We've had $32,000 in expenses to date, and we're over halfway through the year. And so there's a balance of about $30,000 in our account with the town. Our anticipated expenses are 35 to 40 right now, so there's a deficit of $5,000 to $10,000. And like I said, we just got $2,500 yesterday from Unibank, so that's helping reduce this deficit, and we hope to raise $5,000 to $10,000 from ticket prices for Sherbstock to cover the balance of the anticipated cost this year. Initially, we were trying to have a whole year of free events, and that's just been very difficult. And I think if we go into the budget of Sherbstock, people will see why we did need to charge a ticket price. If I could get the next slide, please. So here, the Sherbstock, which is going to be the parade and the music festival, is estimated to come to $35,000. And this is a breakdown of what's involved, so people understand, you know, between the music, talent, the tents, tables, chairs, porta-potties, generators, promotional material, that all adds up. And then we are going to be selling the t-shirts and some posters and keychains, and that's what we, with the tickets, we're hoping that's going to make up the difference. We do have a plan to keep continuing fundraising if this does not happen, but so far we are getting some ticket sales coming in. So next slide. This is our other expenses that we've had. So $32,000, but it's been the website designs, promotional materials, and the events we've had today. First Day Kickoff, the Rockumentary, the Scavenger Hunt Antique Car Show. And if, I don't know, hopefully all of you saw the Bogastyle Bunch, is some characters that have been made that have a history, a little QR code, you can hear the history of the characters. They are currently at the library, and we will be rotating them, coming through at different events still coming up in the rest of the year. Next slide. So the expected expenses for another $30,000, we'll have to continue with the website designs, the promotional materials, and we still would like to have two more newsletters in town. That seems to be the most effective way of reaching everyone. And the events we have planned right now are Farm Day, which will be on September 8. We have Water and Fire at Farm Pond on September 21. The 350th Parade and Sherbstock is October 5. There will be very, there'll be assorted lectures series throughout the fall, and maybe some other small events, and then we'll have a year-end culmination, which will be a time capsule and end-of-the-year party, and that should round off our budget for the 30, the 30,000 expected. And next slide. So here's a little bit of information about the parade, and we are really trying to encourage participation from neighborhoods, businesses, anyone who wants to do it. We'd love to get some more floats. We only have a few floats right now. But we are getting groups who want to march or participate in some way, so if anyone's hearing this or people have ideas, please email us, and that has an email of sherburneparade@gmail.com. And last, next slide. So Sherbstock is going to be the music festival after the parade. And the parade goes down Route 27. It'll start at Lamp lighter Lane, go down 27, ends at Pine Hill Lane. And then the Jamison Fields is where the celebration's going to be for the music fest, and the lineup you can see on the right-hand side. We have quite a few talented people, and there are little blurbs on our website about each of them. Most of them have a tie to Sherburne in some means, so that would be really, we're calling it Not Your Average Jam, and we hope to get the community to come out and support and celebrate. And then the last slide. So we want to thank the Select Board and everyone for your support, and encourage people to visit sherburne350.org to learn more and get in touch with us. We'd love to get more help. Any questions right now from anyone?
Heidi, about how much money do you think you would need to raise in order, oh, Eric's back. How much money would, do you think you would need to raise in order to make Sherbstock free, so that you wouldn't have to sell tickets?
We would have needed another $10,000.
Another $10,000? I'm just wondering whether there is any way that town can find a way to, to cover that. I just think it would, it's, it's, it would be such a minor expense for the town at large, and it makes such a big difference for the event to be, you know, paid tickets versus a free event for the entire community. And I'm just, I don't even know, like, I think that the only, the only mechanism we would have in place to make it happen with town funding would probably be a reserve fund transfer. And it's not, strictly speaking, what the reserve fund is for, but I don't know, it's a bit of a special circumstance that I feel like, I guess we can discuss it here. As the Select Board, I don't know how advisory we would feel about that use for the reserve fund, but at the end of the day, it's like, who wants to be Ebenezer Scrooge, right? So I just feel like $10,000 to make Sherbstock free is, uh, the town really should be able to cover that. If you were talking about $50,000, it might be a little bit tougher, right? But it's like, $10,000. I'm like, we can cover $10,000.
Right. You know, initially, we had another $17,000 that was going to be coming from the state, and the goal was that Sherbstock, we were probably going to have a nominal amount, like $3.50 to stick with the 350 theme, because we did want some ticketing, some way to control numbers of people coming in. So, but it felt, when we got cut, $17,500 was cut from the budget, it had to come somewhere. But I'm really open to anyone's suggestions.
I like Steven's idea.
Just so I know, who's chairing this agenda item? That's like.
You, you are now. We, we had a.
I was chairing it, but now that you're back, you can, or I can finish this one off if you want.
Finish the item.
All right, I'll finish this item.
In terms of, oh, sorry, in terms of controlling the numbers of people that show up, you know, people from all over the place come to the Library Fair, for example, and that's not what this is about. This is really for Sherburne residents. Can we have both, have it both ways? Can we make it free, but somehow require a ticket showing that you're a Sherburne resident? I don't know how you would do that exactly.
And I guess you do Farm Pond stickers, you know, the collector looks up people in order to get a Farm Pond sticker, you are showing your car is registered.
Right, but you know, you don't want to be monitoring cars, because people are going to come all kinds of ways.
No, we're, yeah, we are ordering bracelets that we're going to be handing out to people who have paid, you know, ahead of time, so that they show the bracelet to come in, so it was a quick way to have control of, at the gate, people with bracelets will get in.
I mean, I don't know, maybe it's, maybe it's not a problem. Maybe we shouldn't be worried about it. But I do like the idea of having it cost-free, letting people from Sherburne just come. We'll get much better attendance that way, because, you know, it's kind of a hassle to even to go online, get your ticket, whatever.
Yeah. No, I mean, that, that was our goal, and we'd love to do that, so if there's a way to work it out.
I've seen some events that have. I've seen some events that have premium seats that are paid for, and then space for everybody else. So if you envision, for example, a stage, like the first row of seats or the second row of seats right up against the stage are considered premium seats, and people pay in order to be right there. But everything else is open to the public. I've seen that work successfully as a fundraising tool.
Has anybody approached Roch Brothers? Because when we used to do the parade in the fire department, they, they always supported us with money. I mean, they usually wanted to sign or something, but they, every year they give us a few thousand dollars, and that was, I wouldn't say before I had gray hair, but it was a long time ago. So if you haven't, you know, if you want me to, I'm happy to, if you just tell me what parameters it needs to be, and I don't want to represent myself as somebody that I'm not. The other thing, Paul's comment, and kind of going back to the old, the old parades that we used to do, seniors in the town always got in for free. We always gave them reduced tickets. So maybe there's either reduced or zero cost for senior citizens in the town, or I don't know, I'm a senior, but maybe older, who want to go, and maybe they get, you know, the better rows of seats, just as a sign of respect to them.
Yeah, right, right now, we have a senior and veterans and kids price that's $10 a person. And then it was $20 for an adult or 50 for a family, and we're not putting a cap on what the number of fam, what's in a family. We're going to let people decide on their own, you know, to kind of, if it's a family of four, a family of six, you know, it's going to be the same $50 cap. But I would love it, Dan, if you would want to pursue anything, we'd love to get some help with funds.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we can talk offline, and I just,
Sure.
I just want to, don't, don't want to say anything that I shouldn't be saying.
Yeah, no, it's just I am concerned that 10,000 is a big gap. You know, if I get 2,000 or 2,500, you know, we still have to figure out covering 7,500, so. We still have time, you know, before October, that if you want to think about it and discuss another Select Board meeting, or if you think there's a solution now, we, before we get too many ticket sales and have to refund, that would probably be good.
Let me try and approach from next week.
Okay.
You might talk to Diane, though, Dan, because we got a big donation from Wegamins also.
Yeah.
Dan Sickel, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. So I think it would also be terrific if the event were free. I would have some concerns about using the reserve fund. It's not really what it's intended for, and I'd have a little bit of a concern about, don't want to make too big a deal of this, but the precedent of something comes up that would be a nice thing to do, and that's not exactly what the reserve fund is for, but why, why don't we just tap the reserve fund to just take care of it? And, you know, I'd obviously have to consult with other members of advisory. This is just me off the top, offering a, you know, kind of an initial thought, but I think I would have some, I'd have some concerns about doing that. I guess we'd want to consider other options, like Dan Wolf's, whether there might be some additional fundraising that could be done, or some other path to getting there that wouldn't require tapping the reserve fund for this.
Heidi, I have a quick question. Are you selling those shirts and all the things you're selling at the event?
Yes.
Another fundraising approach could be to pre-sell, maybe they're available now on the website, but we could maybe get some additional revenue by pre-selling, you know, starting, you know, Labor Day weekend or something before to sell things.
Yeah, I don't know if the t-shirts will be in by Labor Day, and part of the problem is manpower of actually setting up, and who's going to do it? I mean, right now, Mary, Abby, and I have been almost involved in every single event. And so it's, uh, some of us are looking forward to December.
What's the total number expected again? I was blocked out.
The, the total number expected at Sherbstock?
Yeah.
I, I think we were thinking 750.
Okay. Just going to think that aloud along Paul's line there. Did like 100 VIP tickets at 100 bucks, or something like that, that'd be 10,000. You know, I mean, or something along those lines.
Yeah, it's kind of, we'll have to look and see. Melinda's been the one that is spearheading the music part and the part of the festival. And I don't know how that would work out from the plan on Jamison, how to set that up. But it's something we can look into.
Or 10 really good seats at 1,000 bucks.
Marion?
Right. It's, we've tried.
Heidi, if an organization, oh, wants to donate, I'm thinking Sherburne Forest and Trail. They usually like to have an opportunity to set up a little booth and sell their trail books and that sort of thing. Could they do that at Sherbstock?
Absolutely.
It could be on the side, because I could get to Forest and Trail, and I, they would want to contribute if they can do that.
Yeah, no, I mean, that would be, that would be great. You know, we've been putting in the newsletters out to people, hoping we get a few people that wanted to donate. It's, it's been very slow. It's, it's difficult when we have the Sherburne Fund also raising money for their endowment, so we're trying not to compete. We don't want to compete with the Sherburne Fund, and they have a very great vision of endowing the town, then for allowing it, which is why they give us a nice chunk of money here to help this. But at the same time, we can't be negative, so. And our, our hope is that at least the end-of-the-year event would be free.
Paul?
Just so I can shift the topic a little bit. Beyond the issue of money for, for that one event, I want to commend you on all the activity that you've got going. It's amazing, the, the scope, the range, the diversity. You, you really, a lot of work and thought has gone into this, and I wanted to commend everybody who's been involved with it. And it looks like you've got a lot of exciting things this fall.
Thank you.
As you previewed a little bit on the, on the slides. So from the point of encouraging attendance, I know you're a little concerned that maybe too many people would show up, but I think this is something that everybody should go to. And it's a chance for the community to come together and to recognize that this has been one of the oldest communities in the, in the Commonwealth. I, I represent other towns, and they're incorporated 100 years later after Sherb. Sherburne is way back. One, must be one of the, the, in the top 10 towns that were settled and then got incorporated. That's stuff that we ought to, we ought to recognize, and and so this is an occasion for the community to come together and have a good time. Bravo to all of you who put this together.
Thank you. I mean, so if, if the feel of the Select Board is you'd like it free, we could proceed, but I would hope that maybe some of you would help look for sponsors to meet that gap? Or, or see if there's any way in the town to have any type of funding. I, we don't really have a cultural budget or an arts budget.
You know, I, I think some, some sort of admission, what, whatever that cost is, it would, would be good, especially going back and when we used to have the fireworks at Borrel Field. And there, there were more people from out of town than there were from in-town, and I think that's one of the reasons why it was suspended or abandoned. I, I don't know what the right terminology is, but you know, I, I think if you, if you charge, you know, we will be able to get some extra money, and it still, you know, doesn't have to be 10, it could be five, whatever it is. But, you know, at lea, at least it has everybody having to pay to come in if it's free. Not that it's a bad thing, but I think you'll find that there'll be a lot of people from out of town, from surrounding communities.
Yeah, and I, I do think some money allows us to have people register, so they do get the wristband, and, and that's our control. We are also going to be giving Council of Aging a certain number of free wristbands, so that they can make sure that people who want to come, if money is an object, that is not the barrier for people. What price would people feel comfortable with? Any ideas?
I'll stick in 10 bucks. You do 10 bucks, and then you actually make, I don't want to call it VIP, but like a founder's, they don't get anything special, they don't get special seats. You don't get whatever, but there was a term, a friend of mine started some either a founder's ticket or something like that, which is just like 40 bucks or 50, or something like that, you know, there's some way
Yeah.
to do that, you know, or maybe your name goes on, founders, like on the webpage, like founder, or something along those lines.
Yeah.
Because even the special seats, I'm thinking, eh, you know, sorry, I bumped Marion.
Yeah, Marion, go ahead.
Right. This is all great, and you know, kudos to Heidi and your whole group. I, I have just one, maybe semi-negative question. I went, I clicked on the link that I got from 350 to go sign up for something, and I found that it had been hacked. Your website was hacked, and can, can you
It was.
pin on that and fill us in on what you're doing to prevent that happening again?
Sure. Basically, we, we bought a higher security package, and it is more monitoring. I don't think anyone envisioned that the site was going to be a source, because we don't really have money or information that we're getting from people, but it was a Japanese attack. That's all we could, would say, and it was, ended up being down for probably two days total, and we have paid for the higher monitoring service now.
Did you get any other reports of hacking during that time?
Other than? No, I noticed it when I signed on, and the site was in Japanese and advertising something in Japanese.
Oh, okay.
Too, I was like, really odd, and then.
Others did see it. Right, okay. All right, just wanted to make sure, because I've been, I was kind of spooked and didn't want to go back and sign up for things, so you don't want that.
No, doing the best we can in the cyber world, unfortunately.
Yeah.
And I did let Klaus know of it right, as well, just, we're hosted totally separate from the town, but I just let him know that it happened, and he said he'd keep an extra alert on the town side, but nothing's come of it.
Okay, good.
So the consensus is you'd like to see an adult ticket at $10, and then children or something else, as long as they sign up, or seniors would be free?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, I will get back to the group on that, and hope that if anyone has ideas for closing this gap, we'd greatly appreciate hearing.
Right. Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, back to you, Eric.
All right, very good. You know, it's funny, I was just talking to Jeremy today. What is it, about bringing back live meetings? When I say live, I mean hybrid. Everyone's always says hybrid, but you know, bringing back some kind of live meeting every other day. And now I have a device here, I just completely fizzled, never happened before, you know, right in the middle of a meeting. I think, you know, these things are kind of vulnerabilities to this, and there is something about it. At some point, maybe not now, maybe during our town administrator or Select Board reports, I'd like to some impromptu discussion on thoughts on that, if we talk long. All right, I think you said, item number two, Community Preservation Act, EPA Language for the November Ballot Question. I have Jeremy and Jackie.
Jackie, you want to take the lead?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. Thank you. So Heather White put together the question and the summary. Marion had put, given, Jeremy had sent it out to the board, and Marion put in some input, which Heather changed some of it. The law requires that Town Council put the summary together, and so the final packet that you have has the final summary from, from Heather, with some of Marion's comments intertwined, but the final packet is from Heather White. So I need you guys to prove it, and I am required to send a certified letter to the Secretary of State's office. They are asking for original copy, so I'm going to email it and then send it certified mail with like return receipt, so I make sure that they get it before September 6. So I'll probably, if you guys approve it tonight, I'll probably work on that tomorrow.
Go ahead, Paul. And I'm, you know, I know the people, it's like, if people could use the raise hand function feature, it does help a lot. I'm trying to look over here. Okay.
I was going to make a motion to approve the language submitted by council and the town clerk and to meet the deadline.
I would like to second that, but Jeremy has his hand up, so I want to also hear what Jeremy had to say.
I want to continue the discussion.
Well, I'll second the motion, so that it's ready to go.
Yeah, but you know, I'm always not a fan of discussion after the second, but whatever, let's, um, or after the motion.
All right.
Not that, but after the, I don't know, Paul likes it, but whatever, it is what it is. Yeah, Jeremy, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little more, a little more detail, a little color. You know, the wording in the ballot is fairly prescribed, so there's not a whole lot of leeway there, but I think Marion's input was very helpful, and Heather did incorporate some of that. I will say that this is the language that's on the ballot that the voters have in the polling place. You know, there's opportunity for proponents outside of the polling place, as somebody's coming in to give out informational materials in, in other formats, so, you know, would encourage proponents to do that. Or, or folks that have other opinions on the matter could, could have information for folks outside of the ballot.
Okay, so I had a question for Jack. Oh, yeah, so go ahead. Does someone have something else?
I do.
Okay, I'll go ahead, Marion.
And get my hand up in town. Right, so exactly what form would that take, Jeremy? Because there are quite a few voting days, and I can't imagine. And uh I can't imagine anyone feels strongly enough to sit out there all five, five or six days. So there's that question and um. I I just want to add that I I think this this statement that Heather finalized looks fine to me. I'm happy with it. Um, I am getting questions, uh, including for myself, actually. Uh, we passed this at town meeting, so I know that by law we have to now pass it again. At the ele- at the state election, but um, you know, that wasn't made clear at town meeting. It probably should have been. Uh, but now I think people will wonder, why do we have to do this again? We already voted it in. And at this point, could it be voted down so that the town meeting vote meant nothing? I mean, I don't understand the relationship there.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I I apologize if I didn't make it clear at town meeting, but I. I I thought in my presentation, I indicated that this was just a vote to put it on the ballot. In November and that it would have to get uh, you know, voted through. And absolutely, yes, if it uh doesn't get enough votes uh in November, then it will not happen.
All right, okay, oh, yeah, I just forgot that part of your talk.
Sorry, my, this is my bad, obviously.
But but I am, uh, I want to make sure that um people understand that this is the vote that counts. And I'm not sure how to do that. I know we can't put uh, you know, political. Biased political statements in the summary in the ballot, but uh I'm wondering, Jackie, how by what. Sort of mechanism can you see information being available as people come into town hall? How would that work?
May I speak?
Yeah, please go ahead, Jackie.
Okay, um, so basically what I was going to say is that anyone that is a proponent. Um, well, anyone that's for or against um the CPA ballot question is going to have to form. A committee. And because most likely they're going to want to spend money to send postcards or whatever to um to everyone in town. To either vote for or against the ballot question. So people will have to file campaign finance forms with me and or and form a committee. You know, um Sherburne voters for CPA or Sherburne voters for. To fail CPA, however they want to name it, but that that will be required. That anybody sends out, you know, information and they spent money, they're going to have to file campaign finance.
Right, I mean, it it's kind of short, uh, short time right now before the election, so I'm not sure that's even possible to organize.
No, no, it it's not, because um. People, people aren't going to know anything about the ballot question until it comes out. Until the ballot question actually comes. The ballot's actually prepared by the Secretary of State's office. So I will have a format of the ballot. Um, around, I would assume somewhere around September fifteenth or so, because federal law says that anyone that lives outside of the country. That has asked for a November ballot, it must be sent um to them by forty-five days before the election, which is September nineteenth. So I'll be getting an electronic form of the ballot before then. And there are people in town that have asked me what the question, you know, they want to know what what the format's going to be. Because they're interested in sending information out. But they have to, like I said, they have to form a committee and file campaign finance paperwork before they do that, before they spend any money.
Okay.
I I have a quick question then. So the ballot itself, is this going to be on the presidential ballot? Or is it a separate ballot? So so I I don't know why, I, for some reason, I thought you couldn't do that. I thought local stuff couldn't go on a presidential ballot, but I guess not. This can be on it.
No, it can. It depends on what it is. If we had a prop two and a half thing, that would have been due in August already. The CPA ba- um ballot questions uh information is due by September sixth, so.
Maybe it's a, maybe it's electing officials. Some of some reason I thought there was limits on how mu- on local. Votes or whatever that can be put on a presidential ballot. I don't know if it was all out or there was actual limits, like this couldn't go, they just couldn't pick that day, but.
Yeah, we can't, we can't put like a select board member on the presidential ballot, as far as I know, something like that.
No, it's true, because I just, then Framingham, just, you know, so they actually are on a November cycle for the mayor and for the city councillors. And I think they went an off year for the purpose of not syncing it up with the with the presidential.
They would probably have to do a separate ballot, just like when we had during COVID. We had um our our annual town meeting was August fifteenth and then the state primary was September first. So I sent out two, we had two separate ballots that people had to vote, one for the ballot questions to pass um. From the annual town meeting and then the other one for the reg- the regular state primary.
Either way, it's not relevant to this vote, so that's all I care. It's not relevant to this. The, well, I will make a note, though, to the general, just the general. So um Sherburne has, like many communities, kind of in touristy, kind of low turn off of local votes. But it's phenomenally high, maybe the highest in the state for presidential turnout. So the vote on this CPA will have like the entire town looking to voting on it. So whoever wants advocates one side or the other, um, I think it will make a difference. You are going to have people who know nothing about this. I would say that most people who actually are going to show up to vote know nothing about this. So anyone that wants either side and wants to do a public education, I think it will make a difference. I want to say. Eighty percent of the people who are on this ballot will know nothing about the CPA, just to be realistic. You look at a voter turnout, five, six hundred on like a selectman's vote or something like that, and we're like, what is it, Jack, like ninety-eight percent on presidential?
I just, I just looked it up uh today. We had um close to ninety-four percent turnout for the twenty twenty election.
And that was during COVID. I think twenty sixteen was even higher.
Yeah, but I mean, we had seventy-five percent of those ballots were vote by mail. So um we'll get a lot of vote by mail ballots, uh people coming in will have two weeks of early voting in person and then on election day. So I'm anticipating probably close to a ninety-five percent turnout.
Yeah, and like I said, maybe even higher, because I think twenty sixteen is even higher than that. I do. Either way, that's just a note. Any other comments on this?
Well, just that I think people will sort of know, I'm not sure how much PR, you know, they have to vote to approve capital projects, even if we approved it at a town meeting. If it's excluded debt, it goes on the uh, the the, you know, ballot, you know.
Yeah, there's many, there's several things. I'm, that's one I was going to pick up. The are uh over two and a half overrides you do for capital. You know, it's very similar, because I think Marion wondered that that has to be verified by popular vote. The difference is. This is going to have three, four times the number of people showing up and show up for those. It's just, it's just a certain, it's just a fact the way it is. Just telling people that it's going to be kind of a little different game on this local initiative than it is with all the others. All right, I think we're good on that. Thank you, everyone. Uh, up next, consideration.
Sorry, can you, can you guys vote?
Can you? Oh, yeah, uh, we have a motion in a second. I'll go around and collect the vote right now. Uh, Steven side?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. Thank you very much. Keeping us on track. See, that's one of the reasons I don't like the motions before the discussion. I really don't. I think it's bad form. And I think it locks you in and um it it prohibits discussion. Um, either way, I I, you know, I've advocated against that. I think it just makes more confusion. All right, up next, uh, discussion and consideration of um. Intermunicipal agreement with the town of Holliston for the sustainability corner. Jeremy?
Yeah, thank you, Eric. Um, I I I was optimistic that I would be asking for some action tonight, but. Unfortunately, uh Holliston still needs some time to review um the IMA. Um, so in your packet is is a draft of the intermunicipal agreement. Uh, it's based on an agreement that we had in place for some shared police services with Holliston, Sherburne and Hopkinton. Uh, so that the format, um, I don't anticipate that Holliston will come back with much by way of comment, but. Um, our town council has reviewed and offered some comment. The Energy and Sustainability Committee has also reviewed and offered um some minor comments. All of those things have been incorporated in what's been provided to to Holliston. Um, talk to their town administrator, uh, he's going to bring, um, he's, it's under review by their council now. Uh, and he hopes to have a a more formal uh approval of their select board by um early to mid September. But uh I would uh welcome any comment or, you know, comments on the IMA or questions in general uh tonight.
Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
So the one concern I had with this agreement was that it's only for thirty hours with uh. Uh, twenty being Sherburne and ten being Holliston. And realistically, from what I've seen from other communities, we're going to be hard pressed to hire somebody. Who's only going to get paid for thirty hours. People are looking for either. Part-time work or they're looking for full-time work, but thirty hours is an odd, odd number. Could we add another community that would add another ten hours to this or? Or are we stuck at at just thirty hours? I think it's going to be very hard to hire somebody.
So I I don't think we're we're stuck per se, Paul, with this in that we could find another partner. Um, I would say that this thirty hours is more attractive than the current, our current allowance of less than twenty. For hiring our own sustainability coordinator to to serve just Sherburne, you know, to keep it under that twenty hours per per. Uh, week threshold that's currently budgeted. So hopefully thirty is more attractive than twenty, um, having two communities together, um, might be more attractive to someone as well. To provide some more impact in in their job. Um, but I I think, yeah, there there could be an opportunity to add another another partner in the future. I I do have some current conversations going with Milis as far as a shared conservation agent. Um, which I'm happy to bring bring this up to them, you know, under those kind, that conversation as well.
Yeah, I think that sounds like a good idea. I wouldn't mind testing out thirty advertising. I think Paul might have a point. Or might be tough, you know, it might be worth testing the waters, but actually, um, if we bring in another community, Milis, um. Would be a great idea as well. You know, this regionalization is something I personally just think is is the future of things. Um, you know, it's hard to set up, once people are employed and everything else, it's hard to set that up, but um. Yeah, I love this. I love the idea of regionalization. It's really hard for these small communities like us to, you know, support these full-time employees and this uh can give them. Um, all the benefits, all the pay and everything. All right, um, anyone else on this?
So can I make a motion?
Uh, just a quick question, you know, one of the uh projects that our former community. Uh, sustainability coordinator was interested in is working in the schools. Uh, to make, you know, an educational impact on the younger generation and which makes me think that. Uh, a partnership with Dover, bringing in Dover might be good. So my question for you guys who may know this is, does Dover have a sustainability coordinator already? And do you think they might be interested in sharing one?
We have approached. Dover, um, this was not one that they were interested in. Happy to ask again, though. In the context of what you said, Marion, by way of the the sharing of the the school districts.
Okay.
Yeah. I agree, that would actually be a very good idea, especially as you say, because like you said, that's probably the largest facility owned by for uh Sherman is actually Dover Children's School. All right, Paul, you want to make a motion? Actually, wait, what's the motion on if we're not ready to move forward?
I'm right, at this point, I'm not looking, because I I think Sher- uh Holliston may have some minor changes that I would bring back to the board, so.
Okay, um, okay.
If you voted tonight, I still may need to come back, because there could be some changes, so. I'm not not looking for action tonight, but thank you for your your input.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Jeremy. Like I said, I love this idea. All right, uh, moving on, uh, Sherman Community Center, um, HVAC system replacement, um, Jeremy and Doug Furbish.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. I think Doug is on the line here. Um, there's a lot of information in your packet. Um, I broached this topic with the the select board. Or um several weeks ago, um, to to give you a heads up that um. The Sherburne Community Center was looking at a a capital improvement, specifically to add HVAC to their first floor. Um, it's a, it's an important project for them in that it would provide, you know, more comfortable. Um. Climate uh for a space that's really important for them to to lease out. Um. Think, maybe Doug, maybe you could take over a little bit and kind of give a little more detail of what you're looking to do and. Um, really, before the select board is is to how to approach this in that. Um, the the capital project, the lifespan is is a little bit on the current lease terms. And the lease agreement between the town and the community center has some some conditions when when projects like that come forward. So there's some discussion and decisions to be made regarding regarding how this uh work may impact your current lease agreement. Doug?
Yes, thank you, Jeremy. Um, as some of you might know, our first floor air conditioner broke down about a year and a half ago. And we've been stumbling along with portable uh units that um window units that have kept the place uh. Somewhat cool, but not cool enough in the summertime uh to, that's adequate enough for the renters. Um, we have a upstairs air conditioning system that's old. And at some point, it's going to have to be repaired as well. That has not broken down. So, and we also have a boiler system that provides heat for the whole building. Uh, we then decided to hire an engineer to do an evaluation of the of the whole system. And give us the right path uh to go down to fix the system. Um, upon finishing that project, it was concluded it might be around a three hundred thousand dollar project. To do the entire building. Uh, right now, we do have air conditioning upstairs. Um, we do have heat for the whole building, but we do not have air conditioning on the first floor. So we opted to kind of do this in phases. And the first phase would be to replace the air conditioning on the first floor. Um, our engineer put together a scope of work, which is in your packet. Um, we sent out um. Uh, the scope of work to a number of uh HVAC companies. Um, we've received four quotes. Um, they range between eighty-nine thousand and a hundred and thirty thousand. Um, the one we're leaning towards is Boston Air, which is also in your packet. Um, the price is eighty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, but currently, if we start the project this fall, there are rebates that are are being offered by Eversource. Uh, for commercial HVA systems that would provide twenty-eight thousand dollars of rebates. So the first floor project would be about sixty thousand dollars. Um, it's something that we would like to begin this fall to take advantage of the rebates. They may not exist next calendar year. And the the project, we would like it to be completed um in the spring, so that when the cooling season starts next May, we're all ready to go. Um, as Jerry met, Jeremy mentioned in our lease. Um, if we're going to do a capital improvement over twenty-five thousand dollars, uh that requires the approval of the select board. Uh, to approve that itself, even though we're paying for it. Uh, and part B of that in the agreement, it was contemplated that sometimes our capital improvements. Might exceed the remaining number of years on the lease. And the lawyers brought it to our attention at the time that we did our lease, that us being a uh a nonprofit. Our nonprofit cannot make a donation to a municipality. So right now, we're looking at a twenty-year life of an HVA system with eighteen years left on our lease. So there's a two-year differential. Uh, the lease says, kind of contemplates two, two options for solving this problem. One is for a pro-rata share of the cost being paid for by the town. Or the town and the community center foundation agreeing to extend the lease. Uh, beyond the term of the useful life of that uh of of the HVA system. So, um, I kind of paused there and answer any questions that you might have.
Just to clarify, then I'll recognize Jeff. So is this an actual item? Would we vote tonight to to move one of those options now? Or is it just just your discussion? Someone could clarify that. If you need to vote tonight.
Well, from from our perspective, ideally, we would like to.
Okay.
Um, so that we know what we're dealing with and what our final cost is, et cetera. Um, but if it requires you guys having a separate meeting to talk about it behind closed doors, that's fine, too.
Okay, let's uh, um, I'll just take the discussion out this way, know where the direction to go. Yeah, Jeff, go ahead, please.
Yeah, yeah, my concern is still the same, Doug. I, it looks like a good analysis, but I'm still surprised that we're not looking at. Uh, air source heat pump system as opposed to just replacing, this is basically uh replacing what you currently have with more modern equipment. But I I would have thought we would have gone with a. I I would have thought we would have gone with a more modern system.
Uh, this is fairly modern. These are um. You know, uh. Air and heat. So it's providing both. We're actually going to have duplicate heat on the first floor.
Yeah, but it's not an air source heat pump, I don't think, is it? The air source heat pump system is one that's basically reversible. You reverse the flow so it cools in the. Uh, summer and heats in the winter, the same system.
So especially if there is ductwork available. So one of the limiting factors in New England to to go to air source seats. Is New England, one of the rest of the country has like these baseboard hot water heaters and stuff like that. It's difficult to already some, if you already have the ductwork, already have means for air. Supply, it actually does lend itself to what Jeff is talking about here.
And and the grants, I think, like the new library has, I think it's, I forget, twenty-two air source heat pumps in it. So I believe that the rebates are even greater for uh, installation of um, air source heat pump technology.
So Doug, have you um, touched base with the sustainability committee at all? And I always get confused because this is, you know, this is the town property we lease out to operate to a nonprofit organization. You know, to what extent is it, you know, a town asset, they pay for things, whatever else. Uh, if something's done in any town building right now, would actually have sustainability, kind of look at it, make a recommendation. Is it a price? Maybe someone else can tell me, whoever, is it appropriate to have sustainability? Review this or not?
Well, it is. It's just to clarify, it is a town building. They're just leasing.
Yep. But there's like, they're contractually obligated for certain capital improvements, you know, I mean, it's just.
I don't know. Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
Because for a regular town meeting, if we do, we do town hall, whatever else, sustainability, we chime in, it'd say like, okay. We like this, don't like that, here's what we recommend and so on.
Rigor roll, I think we could just suggest that we do that.
Well, a cou- couple of notes here, um, one is, um, Tom Trainer is on our board. As well as Frank Hook, and they're both on the committee, so they've bought, actually been very active in the process. Of of this. On the call tonight, we have Rich Horan. Rich is a board member and spent twenty-five years in the HVAC system. Um, perhaps, uh, if you would let him, uh, Rich could give you uh, an overview of of. The difference between what you're suggesting and what we're sort of recommending.
Okay, before you go on, Rich, Jeremy, do you have anything to either contradict or add to, or should I, you have your hand raised?
Uh, yeah, it was actually to to add a little bit to what Doug would just mentioned, um. The. We actually just filed for a grant, um, Tom Trainer helped put it together. There was a grant that the community senior, the Sherburne. Uh, Community Center has put in for some green communities monies to fund um. Attic insulation and window inserts. Um, so I I just wanted to to reinforce, Doug, that does have a number of folks that sit on the Energy Sustainability Committee. That are actively involved at the community center.
Okay, that's good to know inside. Okay, Rich, do you want to add something?
Um, Rich, you're on mute right now.
Take it off mute.
Yeah, there we go, okay.
There you go.
Uh, a very key point, uh, they just came up a minute ago, uh, I think that Jeff made this, uh. This is, this project is in fact for to install ductless. Mini split. Air-to-air heat pumps. This is what the whole essence of the job is. It's electrification of the. Heating cooling building, uh, excuse me, a system in the first floor. With a second phase to to occur somewhat in the near future and upstairs. In the very same regard, that is heat pump system. So it's electrification of the building, if you will. That's kind of a key word. Um, so, uh, I think that's what one thing that the sustainability committee has very much on their plate. Is um, to move away from fossil fuel. Uh, towards natural, to the electrical electrification, so um, um, does that answer the question then, uh, you guys?
What do you think, Jeff? Is that?
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's what I was really asking. It didn't really describe as an air source heat pump, though. It had, you know, condensers and. But I know they have air source heat pump systems have external. Condensers, there's three or four in the library with the twenty-two. Units, you know, the individual units in the building, so.
That's exactly what would happen now in the first floor. There would be, I believe, a total of eight. Uh, floor mounted, their console style uh, air handlers. Uh, connected to either one or two, I'm not sure, uh, condenses on the outside, but they are in fact air-to-air heat pump units.
They'll be reversing and doing the heating in the winter?
Yes, indeed, and we're going to also leave the existing heating system. Uh, cabinet heaters and the one-year-old boiler as a backup heating system with natural gas, so. In case we have a problem, you know, with with a condenser or something, uh, nice to have a backup, uh, whenever that's possible.
Well, the air source heat pumps don't work at ultra-low temperatures either, so it's very good.
You'd be surprised, they've come a long way in our lifetime, so they technically do work down to minus twenty degrees, but then again. Uh, problems can occur, so having a backup is always an ace in the hole.
Good, thank you.
Very good. I'd like to turn to, I'd like to turn the discussion to the board on um. Thoughts on extending the lease the next two years to twenty years, or to have uh, town potentially compensate whatever that final two years of value worth of the lifespan? Anyone?
Go ahead, Paul.
Steven? Actually, Stephen has his hand raised.
Um, I guess. So my first question, and I apologize, we may have covered this the last time we discussed it is. Is the select board uh, authorized to? Do either of these things without any additional town meeting input in terms of extending the lease or? Uh, I mean, if we were to pay a pro-rata share, that's expending town money, which. We, I don't think the select board. Has has a source of uh, discretionary funding that we can just say, yeah, we're just going to pay for it, so would both of these moves require a town meeting vote?
That's a good question. My sense is. Given that the value we would pay for the two thousand, and I'll, the Jeremy's, the two thou- the two-year, the two-year there. Will probably be low enough and might not actually trigger capital expenditure, might be discretionary. I don't know what it'd be like. I don't know if it's even throughout all those, it's diminishing type values, it's the final two years of value.
I think Paul can speak up, and I think we, we didn't get town vote to renegotiate the lease, I believe. We can, we can negotiate. Extend the lease without town vote, I believe.
Well, let me see.
I think when this, because I think I was on advisory when this lease was renewed, and I know that advisory looked at it, which made me think that. Very likely, there was a town meeting vote to authorize the select board to enter into a new lease.
Let me ask Jeremy, do you know one way or the other on this, or is it town council?
Uh, yeah, I don't believe town uh, town meeting uh, action. Was taken or required. I think this was a board um, authority.
That's right, the lease was over three years.
Executed by the select board.
That's right, the lease was over three years. I think that's why it was a contract one, three years, which had to be a town meeting there. So it extended next to two, I'm I'm not sure. Uh, Paul, do you have a comment?
Yes, to me, it's it's a no-brainer. Uh, on both subjects, the uh. Fact that. They need air conditioning is self-evident. The project, when I reviewed it, seems. Perfectly fine. I'm glad they're willing to pay for it. So I want to support that. As far as extending the lease. I was planning to make a motion that would extend the lease. But subject to any input from town council. Well. I think town meeting, my recollection was a town meeting authorized us to sign a twenty-year lease. There should be no problem with going to town meeting and asking for an additional two years. To extend the lease by two years. So rather than trying to decide that. Now, I was going to propose a motion. That would approve extension. If. Town council said it was okay.
Extension of the lease.
Two years.
Yep, and that's consistent. I would like, like I said before, I'd like Jeremy to just inquire in town council. To me, this seems a no-brainer. There's no difference between twenty and eighteen, we just have to make sure. I know, um, you know, votes more than, and now they approve us more than three years needed, but this oddly extended to, so I don't know what that means, so. Um, I I would second that motion myself. I would second that motion. Is there any discussion on this?
You told us not to make seconds until we finished the discussion.
I actually said motions and seconds. I said motions and seconds, actually. Apollo, he snubs it. He always makes a motion that, you know.
Relax, relax.
It'll be difficult, yeah.
No, I think it's a, I I concur. I think it's great. And I. Richard and Doug, you know, um. Looking into it further, I think it's a great. Next step and, you know, we're probably gonna. If you do the final part, we're going to have to extend the lease again. I, the only thing I wonder is, do we want to extend the lease? I don't, we can figure out what the number is, five years, so that when you do phase two in the second floor, we wouldn't have to do it a second time.
I I bet you that would require, um, we'll connect the council, I bet you that anything that would require um, town meeting approval. Let's see, let's see what the vote was. When the town meeting voted last time.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's the first thing they're going to look at.
What would you think, Richard, if you do the second phase, timing-wise? Would that be in a year or two, or?
I I was hoping that i- if we get the phase one, the first floor. Uh, uh, completed, let's say before March, okay, even the the year end this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and then and then start collecting proposals for the second floor. We've already scoped it out basically, but. And then collect uh, proposals maybe in the spring. And that could be uh, summer or fall of next year, twenty twenty-five. That's our, kind of our game plan.
Yeah, so that's why I would only want to extend the lease one time, so that might make us extended another year or two. And I also mentioned, you know, in the library, we not only got. EverSource rebates, we got leads, we got some leads rebates as well.
Yeah.
All right, we're motioning a second to um, to move forward with this, uh, extend at least two years pending legal advice by Ger- um, that Jeremy will seek for, um. Uh, town council. Uh, I'll collect the vote, uh, Steven?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. Alright, any further discussion? Otherwise, I'm moving on to the next one.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you as well, guys. Good night.
Good information, absolutely in here.
Very good.
Okay, uh, moving on, um, consideration of appointments. Public Safety Committee. So we have Dan Wolf for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty-sixth, second. Twenty-seven, twenty-seven, sorry. So any questions or motions? Alright, motion, do I have a second?
Excuse me, second.
Sorry, Dan, do you want to, since you're here, do you want to make a statement or anything, or should I collect the vote?
No, I, you know, um. I think Paul and I have been talking a little bit over the last couple of years about some safety issues at the corner of Lake and North Main Street and. It came to my attention that, um, you know. People are needed on the Public Safety Committee. I retired last February as VP of Logistics at a men's retail company. Um, I've been in the town close to twenty-five years and I had over twenty years. Uh, I was a member of the Sherburne Fire Department, so I I thought it might be a good idea and it's somewhere I could help gladly.
Excellent, well, thank you for the volunteer. Thank you very much. Alright, um. On favor, Steven?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. Next one up, Open Space Committee.
Thank you.
Um, I think I can do these together, right? Mary Nutrifer for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty-seven. Associate, uh, converting from associate to a full-time, full-voting member. And Kevin, uh, Stephenson, for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty-seven, as a new appointment.
So moved.
Alright, do a second.
Duncan.
Marion, do you want to make a statement?
I want to apologize for my application form. That was the worst handwriting I've ever seen. If I were you, I would turn it down on the basis of. But I didn't want to, you know, burden you with another CV, so. I just sent it in, so I apologize for that, but yes, I I'm happy to kind of re-become a full member because. Uh, with Sam Nelson's leadership now as Chair of the Committee, uh, I'm involved working. With the rest of the committee as usual on. Putting a new open space plan together, and I thought it made sense to be a a member again.
Excellent, well, thank you as always, Marion. I mean, you're not just a a. You know, a good volunteer, you provide so much quality information and assets to it, so thank you so much for doing this. And is Kevin Stephenson here?
I am here indeed, um, yes.
Would you like to just make a statement?
Sure, um, I've been volunteering for a while, um, so when, uh, and I've really enjoyed being a volunteer on the committee, so when, uh. Sam reached out to me and asked me if I wanted to join as a. As a, as a member, um, I was more than happy to do so, and I'm excited about the, the work we have in front of us to work on the new plan.
Excellent. Did I say your name right? Stephenson? Okay. Alright, um. I'll collect the vote. Uh, Steven?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
I, oh, yeah, I.
I might as well. And we could, I was thinking about that, we could have split the votes, Marion, could I abstain from her own or whatever else, but it seems like this is kind of a no-brainer. Especially, um, unopposed.
Absolutely.
Okay, moving on.
I was going to say, is it all of turns since the Chair of Open Space that's leading the charge this time? On opens, the open, new open space pa- plan. Uh, it's not on the agenda, but do you think it's? It's uh, fair for him to just give a brief statement of where that plan stands now? Or is that?
I don't, it'd be tough with the agenda. I mean, if something, maybe if you wanted to say something, a select board report or something like that. But to have someone give up. Some, you know, sometimes it's like more reports, I feel, that we kind of push the whole thing with agenda a little bit, but whatever, we do what we do, right?
I agree, okay.
And but maybe, um, uh.
It should be on the agenda, because then people. Might have seen it's not on the agenda and would attend it in the future if it was on the agenda, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we'll gladly add it to the next agenda, because there's, you know, to speak to Diane and Jeremy if there's a room for it. It could be great. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so moving on, um. We have the consent agenda. Uh, we'll say it's a simple one this year. Any motions on that? I'll move to approve and second.
Second.
Alright, on favor, Steven?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. Okay, um, select board reports. Uh, any select board reports on something?
Yeah. I I I, I wanted to report a little bit about the. Ribbon-cutting ceremony with the roundabout, but I I I see that there's an item on the Jeremy's. Reports about the intersection, so if he's going to cover that, then I. I'll step off if he, if he was going to do technical stuff and budgeting stuff about that, then. I'd like to. Speak and commend a few people, so. Can we ask Jeremy if he's going to cover this, the ceremony part?
I suspect it's not going to be technical stuff, given that it's a town ministry report and a standalone item, but you can clarify, Jeremy, what do you want to talk about?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to give a a brief summary, um, I think, and and actually introduce it as probably the last update on the project and that it's. Essentially completed. Uh, and that, um, the intersection and the the detour would be removed. Tomorrow morning and the the intersection open to traffic, and I just wanted to thank everyone. That was able to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony today, thought it was a a great event and. You know, th- thank you all for being there, uh, that that could be here. Could be there, so. Yeah, Paul, please add anything you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to. I'd like to. I'd like to commend. Uh, Jeremy and Sean Colleen and, uh. The whole team. They. The roundabout looks great. And everyone who was in attendance was. Oohing and aye. Over what's been accomplished. It's been years in the making. We've discussed this roundabout. For many years at the board level. It was always thought to be. A, too expensive, and B, we didn't want to get involved with land takings. But somehow we're able to do this project. With state funds largely, I think seventy-five percent, I think, was the rapport, because it was state funds. And without any land takings. And it looks absolutely beautiful. And we have the. The obelisk for the Leland. Memorial from eighteen ninety-four now in the center. It's.
Eighteen forty-seven, Paul, just to stop you, eighteen forty-seven.
Eighteen forty-seven, thank you, even older. It's, it, it's a wonderful addition to the town, and I'm excited about it, I think. The people who are there are all excited about it. And the whole community. And the whole community, you're gonna be driving by it? Please, look at it. And again, thank you to the team that made it happen.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I was very glad that Gino could've shown up as well. He kind of, um, got things started with the grant, his initial grant applications and, um. I think it was great to see him and great that he, he went there. Between basically Gino, Jeremy and Sean, like, really pulled this off, and I'm sorry if I'm missing anyone. All right, um, any other select board reports? Oh, so I alluded to one earlier and I've, I've been chatting a little bit about this. I want you to think about it, maybe don't execute it, maybe wait till either after daylight savings or maybe we even do it like as a, you know, days get shorter and maybe September, October. Is going to like half and half live and on, uh, Zoom meetings. I know everyone likes Zoom and, uh, when I say live, it's gonna be hybrid, of course. And, um, it's easy. And I think it's easier on some staff. I, I appreciate that. And, um. You know, it's easy for ourselves, you know, I just like, you know, shut the thing off and home. But there's still something I think kind of missing there. Um, I'm lucky I had an extra computer today. You know, if I didn't, I wouldn't be on this meeting. How many, how many residents that happens to or whatever, who knows? We haven't, I haven't heard complaints about it. But just put a bug in everyone's ear about. Moving to maybe like every other meeting being hybrid or something like that. And get us kind of, you know, back and, uh. More, not, not relevant note, but talk about the more, just kind of removal from reality we have with the Zoom thing. I don't know how many times I've met someone in real life. And they're like, oh, Eric, I don't recognize them. I just talked to them in Zoom. Uh, the day before. You know what I mean? I mean, it's just my eyes and what I see, I don't know, and whatever it is, but it, I, it's filled us further and further disconnected, and that's just a personal thing would make. That, you know, we're starting to become more and more like, uh, I don't know, avatars. All right. All that being said, let's look at, uh, town administrative reports. I think we did the Washington Street one.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. But I think, speaking of which, I think my connection is unstable. I've been kind of in and out, so I, I apologize. But yeah, um, moving on to the, the staffing updates, uh, actually, uh, kind of discussed this one a little bit earlier as well. Uh, the shared conservation agent discussion that we're having with, with the town of Millis. Uh, have a meeting with the town administrator there, uh, Mike, um, early next week. It's. Actually, could, will be our second. He's had a chance to, to, to have more conversations with his select board and, and then there's, there's a lot of interest. Uh, um, to, to pursue this, so, um, some more to come on that. Um, an update on the RFQ or the re- request for qualifications for the designer services for the Sherburne History Center. Um, that, uh, request was published and advertised at the end of July. The proposals are due from architects August thirtieth. Uh, about a little over ten firms have, have submitted questions on, um, the RFQ, so I think there's a lot of interest, which is great. Uh, we have, uh, a meeting tomorrow of our sort of working group to go through the questions that have been raised and to help respond to those. Um, and, uh, we'll see, we may extend the bid and, and have a site visit. Um, so we might extend, um, uh, the due date by a week and, and kind of give everybody the benefit of visiting the site, but. Um. Uh, moving along well there, and I think there's a lot of interest from, from design firms. Uh, and the last update, um, didn't wanna start to end on a sour note, but, um, the town hall, um, campus well supply. Uh, our third quarter wi- with some testing that was done in July exceeded the Commonwealth standards for PFAS. That standard's the twenty parts per trillion. Uh, the test results came in at twenty-one point four-three parts per trillion, so just over the Commonwealth standard, but, um, out of compliance nonetheless. So we will be required to s- to issue a public education and public notice. Uh, DEP is reviewing the format of that and, and once we get, we get approval, we'll, we'll make sure to get that out. The, that actually takes the form of posting. Um, uh, inside all the public buildings that are served by that water supply.
Oh, yeah, Paul, go ahead.
The standard is changing and the, the federal government has moved for, I think, three of the PFAS chemicals, the six thousand. PFAS chemicals, they've moved the standard down to point four rather than twenty. And although that doesn't take effect for a couple of years. I think we should be. Protective of our employees and visitors to our town buildings. And we should, we should work towards that. That, uh, standard of four parts per trillion. As opposed to the standard of, of, uh. Of twenty-one. I would also mention that there's six thousand of these PFAS chemicals. And according to a. A whistleblower from the EPA, at the rate that. The federal government is testing PFAS chemicals. It will take seven thousand years before all those chemicals are tested as to what's healthy and what's not healthy. So right now they're regulating only a few. You've gotta assume that all PFAS are dangerous unless proven otherwise. And the tests that you're doing probably are testing for those. For the notorious bad six. Um. But if you test for all PFASs, you'll find that number to be two hundred or three hundred or four hundred. And while. The numbers reflect unregulated PFAS. Again, according to the experts, there is no good PFAS anywhere. And on top of that, I heard the story that the chemical companies who made the, the PFAS who are being sued. Left and right. To, for damages by municipalities. Are in fact. Busy making products to replace PFAS. And therefore their sales are going up, which is covering the cost of settling. But in the products that they're making to replace the PFAS. They're inventing new PFASs by altering the chemicals that are used. So there's still PFAS-classed chemicals. And so the cycle will go on and on and on forever. And then one more thing to add to this, which is the state legislature has passed a. New law that requires phasing out a firefighter gear. That has PFAS chemicals in it. The unfortunate reality is though, that you can't buy. PFAS-free. Fire equipment. What you can get is allegedly free of PFAS outer garments. But the inside moisture barrier is made out of PFAS. The part that's closest to the human body. Is still made of PFAS, even the replacement gear. And the outer shell, which is advertised as being PFAS-free. Really means that it's not one of the regulated PFAS chemicals. And to make the outer shell be moisture resistant, they invented a new PFAS. Which again will be seven thousand years before EPA gets to testing it. And so they're marketing it as PFAS-free, referring to the ch- chemicals that are being tested. So the companies are making a lot of money. In the meantime, firefighters are actually coming down with cancer. And s- a number of communities have actually commissioned and asked our firefighters to go get tested. And it's amazing. The results, we're finding that many of the firefighters are loaded with PFAS themselves. And. The.
It's actually in their foam too. It's not just their uniforms, it's in the foam that they use to fight the fires also.
Yes, yes. Exactly. Uh, because PFAS is very good at making bubbles and foam. And in fact PFAS are in everything. They are, uh. They're in common household items like dental floss and, uh. All kinds, I can go through, but it's clothing, carpeting, all that kind of stuff and. Part of the pushback about, well, let's not focus on firefighter gear, cause they only wear that once in a while, but then they go home and they sit on. Sofas that are covered with PFAS. And they, they, uh, play with their children on carpets that are covered with PFAS. So fixing the uniforms doesn't make any sense, cause there's PFAS everywhere. So what we have is a, a society that's gone crazy with too many PFAS everywhere. Not enough regulation. And people actually getting sick. And people dying. So that's a long way, way of saying. That even though our wells test. Above twenty. I'd like to see us work to zero. And that's done by using carbon filters. And in fact, there's, there's a push on for these. Carbon filters that you can put in your home. There are all kinds of, of, uh, devices that, that can be done. I'd like to see that done in our. Town hall and our public buildings that have this PFAS reading. For the protection of our employees and the protection of visitors.
Well, I'm sure. Like, I, I'm sure that, um, you know, Jeremy will, will look into what options there are right there. I mean. On the short term, the exposure, it's not volatile, it's not inhalation. Um, you know, I don't know if there's anything from like washing your hands and face, but I think maybe drinking water, bottles, like bottled water. At, um, town hall would be an option on the short term. I don't know if we'd execute that now, maybe see how the next round of sampling comes. Um. Just a few thoughts. I think, you know, for the purpose of this. Town of Ministry Report, I think it's good information, Paul, and we can, um, I think Jeremy will come back when he gets more.
They, they've already done the bottled water thing. They've posted not to drink the water in town hall and they're already, um. Have, uh, executed the bottled water.
Yeah, so that's ninety percent.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. You know, we've, the, yeah, bottled water is available at all the, the building serviced by the town campus wells. And has been for a little over a year now. Um, if you recall, at the past town meeting, uh, funds were, uh, appropriated to retain, uh, an engineer to help study and design. Um, uh, you know, what the needed filtration, um. Not only at the town campus well, but we've also included Pine Hill Elementary School, uh, the fire station headquarters. Um, and yes, we would be, uh, we have, you know, would be giving guidance to that, um, design consultant or, you know, environmental consultant to meet. The new upcoming, uh, federal standards or meet or exceed the federal, uh, uh, standards coming up. So, you know, looking ahead, um. With, with, yes, the, the aim to, to get as low as, as possible. Uh, with, with PFAS. And there, there's side benefits as well. Likely it would be some form of carbon filtration. And li- likely there will be other benefits by adding that treatment to, to remove other. Uh, either regulated or, or not yet regulated, um, contaminants to the water.
Yeah. And I know the carbon filtration can be expensive and it, it might be some ion exchange involved, but either way. Um, something to consider. I don't know how difficult it is to split it, so. Some places they'll actually, especially if you're near a, a level, they'll let like the toilet water and other waters, for example, be, aren't treated and they'll treat like sink water or something like that. You know, I know, uh, like I said, it's not, it's not cheap, um, to put, you know, carbon filtration in a public building.
Yeah.
Yeah, Paul, do you have more?
Yes, because you made a comment that, Eric, that. The stuff can't be breathed and that's not true because the six thousand chemicals and while the six that have been regulated. Aren't volatile amongst the six thousand, there are stuff that's regulated. But beyond that, every time. A. A. Fire occurs and there's a bottle in there, this stuff gets airborne. So I listened to an, an airport tell me that. They're getting more PFAS from rain. Than they are from. The leftover foam that they use to put out fires. That the. All of us. Every time it rains. It's raining PFAS because the stuff is volatile. And because. When you half burn it. You throw, you throw a, a, let's say a bottle of water that is made out of plastic, those plastics contain PFAS. It gets airborne. The only way to burn it is intense heat. And there are places like in Maine. Uh, Clean Harbors has, has a incinerator in Maine, it has enough temperature to, to actually destroy the PFAS mo- um, modules, uh, molecules. But. There's enough combustion going on, there's enough volatility. There are contaminated soil piles, people do construction, they dig up stuff, it's got PFAS in it.
All right, I, I, I'm not, it's kind of repetitive. I wanna have a science discussion with you here, but the answer is actually not volatile, being burned and carried into the atmosphere under, under. The incineration of brain is completely different than partitioning from a water phase to a vapor phase. That's like VOCs. They have a low, a low vapor, vaporization point. That is different, the term volatility. I won't have discussion, you and I can have a phone call and talk what volatility means, but if you look it up, yes, there are actually not, might be a few compounds in there. But not the regulated ones and it's not considered like a VOC, volatile organic comp. So those are actually volatile compounds like nap- naphthalene, benzene, ethyl benzene, xylanes. They will partition from the, from the liquid phase to the vapor phase under atmospheric pressure. And PFAS won't. So you can actually have like PFAS in your toilet and you will not breathe it in. If you burn a piece of plastic that is completely different physical mechanism and non-volatile items can actually go up in the atmosphere under that, under those conditions. And I'm sorry to cut you off, Paul, just. Did you have anything else?
Well, just the point is, I think we need to do more.
All right. Um, Jeremy, you had your hand raised, okay, it's done. Um. Anything else on this?
Well, I would just say the best thing we ever did with regard to PFAS is not approving the, uh, artificial turf. That's it, that, that, that's a huge source of PFAS. And we're, and they're now thinking right now of, um, replacing the artificial turf field at the high school with another one.
Oh, really?
Oh, really? Hopefully that the industry there has kind of gotten ahead of the curve, you know, with, with a lot of these concerns. Uh, Marion, your hand's raised.
They have, they, what they do is they can only detect, I think, now something like six or eight kinds of PFAS, but so they just go with one that there's no test for yet.
Yes, exactly.
It's just like those, you know, partially hydrogenated vegetable oils were dangerous, but they allowed shelf-stable crackers and cookies and everything, so. There, there's a reason why they use PFAS and a reason why they use partially hydrogenated vegetable oils. Because it allowed their product to do what people wanted it to do, but it wasn't safe.
I mean, ev- everything you find that bad in the environment, not everything, but most things that are ubiquitous in the environment like, um, asbestos. Asbestos is found in every single human being above the age of six that they've ever tested it for. Guess what? It was a good material for what it was used for, ironically also fire, fire resistance. Uh, DDT, anything you mentioned that. Yeah, Marion, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, i- it's true that PFAS and all these other sources of contaminants are, we're, we're really messing things up, but if I can just. Alleviate a little bit of the angst about this, and there should be a lot of angst, and I think Paul is right to point it out that we, as a town. We need to be very sensitive to, you know, ways that we can possibly. Uh, mitigate the di- the, the damage from PFAS, but just a little bit of reassurance. Uh, if, if there's a, say, uh, activated carb- charcoal filter. It should remove all the PFAS, not just the six that are the, the bad guys, because. They have in common is that, you know, they're long-chain carbons bristling with, with fluoride ions that are. Negatively charged and carbon will take them all out, so I think that, you know, filter is a good idea.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right. We good?
Can we talk about microplastics now?
Why, James, put James on the line for us?
Common deepest part of the ocean. Except that Mariana always, always, um, has been all that trench.
I think they've, uh, recently found it in human brain tissue now as well.
Yeah.
There you go.
That's my excuse.
You guys wanna cheer me up? I'll, I'll call you, all right.
All right, someone make a motion here.
Move to a turn.
All right, second, all right, on favor, Steven?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I'm emphatic, I am a strong I. All right, let's go. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Here and I am.
Good night.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry about my connection.